So back to Kathleen, I met Kathleen, I think it might have been her first campaign. It was anyway, and it was a wonderful time when I, when I got to meet her and I've considered her a friend ever since. Kathleen Clyde is a Portage County Commissioner. She serves on the Executive Committee of the Portage Development Board, working with regional, public, and private sector leaders to help create and retain quality jobs in Portage County. Working across the aisle with County Auditor Janet Esposito, Commissioner Clyde created a Portage County Complete Count Committee to ensure Portage County has full participation in the 2020 census and receives its appropriate share of federal funds, which is very important. She served for four terms in the Ohio Legislature representing Portage County, focusing on educational issues, economic development, voting rights, and government reform. In 2018, she was the Democratic nominee for Ohio Secretary of State. Kathleen graduated from Wesleyan University and earned her law degree from the Ohio State University Moritz College of Law. A native of Garrettsville in northeastern Portage County, she has lived in Kent for 10 years. Welcome to Rotary, Kathleen. We are anxious to hear you speak.
Well, thank you so much. It's really nice to be back and to talk with Rotarians in Kent. So appreciate the contributions of so many of you to the community through Rotary and through the many other public service oriented endeavors that I know each and every one of you are very active in supporting. I am going to talk to you a little bit today about the county's response to the COVID-19 pandemic. That's really taken up all of our time and what our largest focus is on as a county is getting through this pandemic as best we can, working together, uniting, hopefully to overcome and to come out of this as soon as humanly possible. But I wanted to talk to you a little bit about what that means at the county level. I know that I know a lot of you and you know about my work, but you may not know what a commissioner does in relation to a global pandemic and what in particular your county's response has been like. So I'll just go over some of the work that we've been doing and hopefully we'll have a little time for questions and discussion at the end. When this first came on, I will say I was elected to be the president of the Board of Commissioners, like the chair of the board. There's only three commissioners, so I always laugh a little bit that there's a president, but there is. And as you all know, the chair of a body has significant authority in setting agenda and making sure that the items that we're discussing and moving forward have the support of the commissioners and of the county as a whole. One of the first things that we did when I became the president of the board was work to establish a county administrator position in Portage County, which proved to be a really smart move for the county as we have been dealing with this pandemic. We were actually the largest county in Ohio, largest population and budget, not to have a county administrator. And what a county administrator is, is basically like a chief of staff for the county that can funnel up all of the departments that report to the county commissioners. We have 11 departments reporting directly to us and also work with all the different elected officials that are part of the county staff and budget to help us work more efficiently and effectively. So we started on a sort of a hybrid path of we have a part-time administrator who is a one of the directors of our departments. And that has proved to be an efficient and effective way to deal overall and especially in this pandemic. One of the things that we did right away was work to establish a telework and remote work policy for our county staff. I know many of you dealt with this in your organizations and businesses, but we need to make sure we're still able to provide all of the essential services that the county residents rely on, but trying to do so as safely for residents and for our workers as possible. And we probably have about half of our workforce that are teleworking from their home and still doing the important work day to day of the county. We also worked ahead of the federal government, which eventually came up with a leave policy that many of you are probably familiar with, the Federal Family Coronavirus Assistance Act. It's FF-CRA. But ahead of that, we were ahead of the curve and we adopted a leave policy for families with small children at home that lost their childcare and also for any employee that may be tested positive or was showing symptoms of the coronavirus so that they would not come into work and affect other employees and residents that may be interacting with the county. And also if they had a family member that was impacted, so they could help care for that family member and also follow the quarantine recommendations for contact with somebody with that illness. A few weeks after we implemented that policy, the feds came in and mandated that to us. So we were glad that we were ahead of the curve and hopefully protecting our employees and our county residents. We also have been working very closely with a number of departments and coordinating the county's response to COVID-19. The lead agency for responding is actually the Health Department, which is not a county commission agency. It's a separate body with its own separate board, but we have been working very closely with them to coordinate our response and especially with our emergency management department, known as our EMA. Like FEMA, we have a county FEMA director and small department that has been working to coordinate weekly, now they're bi-weekly meetings with all of the county elected officials and other key leaders of county entities. And we also have weekly calls with just the leadership of the Board of Commissioners and these, the public health and our emergency management, just to coordinate service. The EMA itself, which is a part of the county commissioners, has been very active in maintaining a PPE stockpile and helping distribute PPE throughout the county. To date, we've actually distributed 37,000 surgical masks, 10,695 masks, 13,000 cotton masks, 2,300 gowns, 57,000 pairs of gloves, 18 no-touch thermometers. It has been quite a coordinated effort of moving these supplies out to healthcare facilities and other needy agencies and businesses and residents that need access to those critical pieces of protective equipment in this pandemic. We developed a limited access plan for the county. We didn't want to just have business as usual with residents and full staff in our building, mixing and even just entering an office and that becoming a mass gathering of more than 10 people. So what we have done is we have limited access to our main building to the public and set up online access, phone access, and then when in-person access is absolutely required, we can still do that by appointment. So that is still what the county is operating under and we continue to consult with the Health Department to determine when it's safe to ramp back up and to go into full normal activation. Our meetings, like yours, have gone remote. We meet via Zoom and we have guidance from the Attorney General of Ohio that we are able to do that and still meet all of our open meeting requirements and public records requirements to do so. We've worked hard to support people who are struggling in this pandemic, whether it be with housing, with access to food. We have worked closely with family and community services to provide housing for first responders or others who have no place to go, who may need to quarantine. We have been working to increase access to food assistance, something that I've been participating both as a public official and in my private capacity, doing food drives on the weekends, just seeing a huge increase in the demand countywide. We also did an update to our prevention, our PRC plan, which provided some cash assistance to families in need in an emergency situation. That was something that was part of some CARES Act funding that we received from the state that we were able to assist low-income families. We started a business loan program, working with NDS and the Portage Development Board, to help businesses that were restarting to access some low-interest funds to be able to cobble together with other funds available, some needs that they may have in order to reopen. And we're continuing to look at the availability of grants to businesses as we get more allocation of federal CARES funds. We've been dealing with a tough budget situation in the county. Luckily, unlike some municipalities which are more reliant on income taxes than the county, we are still in a pretty strong position and have not had to furlough or lay off any of our county workers. We've put a hiring freeze in place and we hope to be able to cut spending enough to, again, weather the storm and avoid layoffs or furloughs of our essential employees at your county government. We have seen some racial disparities in how the pandemic is impacting our residents, seeing higher infection rates and death rate among minorities in the region dealing with COVID-19. So we are working together with the Health Department and as a board to address that problem and work to see how racism works in a public health setting and how we can come together to work to combat it. We established a CARES Act work group to deal with the pretty big influx of CARES funding that have come into the county, that we have a very short window that we're able to spend those dollars and a lot of restrictions in how we're able to spend them. We mostly are needing to spend them not to fill revenue gaps, but to deal directly with the pandemic. So we've built back up our PPE stockpile. We are working to, to help with employees and staff time that were covered as part of dealing with the pandemic and also things like disinfectant for our buildings, UV machines, to try to make sure our courthouse is safe for the public coming in and out, our jail and different settings where we can't limit access to the public, but we still need to make sure that our spaces are safe. As we are looking to draw more of those dollars down, there's legislation being considered at the state level right now. We're looking at ways we can get some of that assistance out directly to residents through further business grant programs and also some rental assistance and mortgage assistance programs that we'll be considering and hope to be announcing soon. We continue to advocate at the federal level for a second stimulus. The CARES funding has been so critically needed, but that was passed back in March, when a lot of us hoped we'd be through this pandemic as school was starting back up and the summer months maybe slowed some of the spread. Well, that hasn't been the case and our school districts need funding, our workers who are unemployed need additional assistance, our Health Department needs assistance, and our local governments and state governments have huge budget holes that only the federal government can come in and step up and help with. Those negotiations are ongoing. I think many of you may have seen the Record Courier this morning. It looks like they are stalled, but that continues to be important and we'll continue to advocate for it. You heard about the census. I continue to be worried about the pandemic and its effect on kind of dampening the response rate to the census. We also got an unfortunate announcement a few weeks ago that the deadline for the census was moved back. So instead of being at the end of October, it's now at the end of September. So we still have 20 to 30% of our county has not been counted. And it's so critical that we all speak up and talk about the importance of filling out your census. You can go online, you can do it over the phone, or you can mail in the questionnaire that you received. And even things like the pandemic and the money that we're drawing down for our public health department and for our school districts and for our local communities to deal with the pandemic is related to the census and our population and what we're able to access. It's just so critical. So I encourage everyone to pitch in here. We're on the home stretch and we need to get everyone counted. And then also, we've been helping our Board of Elections get ready for Election Day. They have purchased equipment to be able to process additional absentee ballot, paper ballot counting for the expected influx of mail-in ballots, helping to make sure that they have the PPE that they need and that poll workers will need. We are looking at giving county workers the ability to take paid administrative leave from the county to serve as poll workers, because we've had a number of people who are not wanting to serve this year because they are older and part of a vulnerable population. And we're hopeful that we can get some of our staff to step up and that we can encourage our other municipalities locally to continue doing something like that as well, so that we can all pitch in and make sure our democracy is safe and ready to go for what will surely be a crowded presidential election that people will be very interested in. So that's a rundown of how Portage County has put responding to COVID-19 as a central focus. We have had 940 positive known cases in the county and unfortunately 65 deaths. This is something that we take so seriously and I hope kind of going over what we've been doing, how we've been responding, gives you some assurance that we are working hard, that we care deeply about each and every one of our residents, and we will keep at it until hopefully, working together, we're on the other side of this, hopefully one day soon. So, thank you so much, Kathy. I was so happy to get this invitation and I miss seeing everyone. I feel like I do these dispatches from my office here in Kent, in my home, all the time, but it's so nice to get to see a number of you. And I look forward to one day getting to see you in person again and work with you. And thanks for all that you all are doing as well.
Thank you.
Nelson, you have a question?
Jim Myers does. Thank you for the presentation. I have continued concern about the availability of testing and eventually vaccines for our employees and obviously for my clients. Is there an overall county plan for this that you can share with us at all? Or when do you see that plan coming out? I'll turn my mic off.
Thanks, Nelson. That's a great question. And some of these national issues about access to testing and funding for our public health departments, we see them play out in real life here on the ground. And I know that we don't have a, we really only have one public testing site in Portage County, which is the CVS in Kent, which I do not believe is adequate for our population. I was glad to see the pop-up testing that we had at NeoMed, but I think many of us know how important the ability to frequent testing is and to quick test results. And often the test results can take up to a week to come back. And that's just not adequate for the need to do contact tracing and to try to contain the virus. Nelson, one of the things that I'm looking at is we, if, it's Senate Bill 357, which passed the Senate last week, is supposed to go before the House either this week or next week. And that is the additional CARES allocation for local governments. And it's, it's, it's the same amount we've already received. So it's potentially an additional $3 million to the county. And then other entities will also access some of those funds. And what I'm looking at doing is seeing what we can do to help the Health Department with some of those funds, with testing, with contact tracing, access to rapid testing, if there's something we can do to take matters into our own hands. And what I'd like to do is look at what some of the local entities that did not have to wait for this state legislation, if you had a population of over 500,000, you were given your CARES allocation directly instead of having the state hold on to it. So it'll be interesting to see like what Cincinnati and Dayton and Columbus, how they were able to help their health departments with some of these access issues. I'd like to replicate that with these additional funds in Portage County, provided that they come down. So it's still a bit of a waiting game, but I think what you mentioned are our major priorities for you and I would say for the commissioners as well.
Kathy, Kathleen, excuse me. I prefer to vote early and in person at the Board of Election Office. Will I still be able to do that?
You absolutely will. The Board of Elections, even though now we're in a limited access plan, the access to the Board of Elections will be open, starting 28 days before Election Day. And that will include some weekend and evening hours as we get closer to the election. And I encourage everyone to vote how you feel comfortable. There's three ways to vote. You can vote by mail. You can vote early in person, as Jim is talking about at our Board of Elections in Ravenna, or you can vote on Election Day. I assure you that option will be available this time. I know that the primary was a bit of a fiasco with that at the last minute not being an option, but vote the way that you feel most comfortable. And all three of those will be available, accessible, and we will have precautions in place, Jim, so that that's a safe way for you to participate and cast your vote.
Any other questions for Commissioner Clyde?
I guess.
Who goes first here?
Chad, go ahead.
Kathleen, this is a little bit off the subject, but your hometown of Garrettsville has been in the news a lot lately. Can you give us any insight into what's going on up there?
Yeah, it's unfortunate. There have been some incidents, from what I can tell, of racial, you know, black residents being intimidated or, you know, hearing hateful remarks. I don't believe that those incidents have been reported, but they have caused a lot of, I think, reflection and difficulty for, for black residents and for white residents who are sympathetic to what's going on right now nationally. And I believe that the protests that have occurred are not large. From what I've visited, it was probably 10 to 15 people peacefully protesting with signs, just wanting to assert that Black Lives Matter and that racial justice is important and that we should unite against racism. But I think that it's a volatile issue, especially in certain communities. And I think that some pretty sizable counter protesting has gone on. I know that there have been guns and open carry as a part of that, which I think has been viewed as somewhat scary and intimidating, possibly on both sides. I know I've heard from the Black Lives Matters side that that's a concern of theirs. But I think overall, it looks to me like the protests have been, have been peaceful. And that's a First Amendment right that I think will continue. And I want folks to know that I hear them, that I see them. That's why I stopped out there. That's why I chatted with them. And, you know, this is an issue that I think we all hopefully are paying attention to and thinking about how we can stand against racism and come together as a community. And I think it's a struggle right now in Garrettsville. I think it will die down, but you know, as somebody from there, I've made it known that I hope I'm a resource to people who, who want somebody that will stand with them, that will lend them ear, and that will stand up for the right to peaceful protest. I think that's very important in our nation and in our county. And that's a little bit of my take, Chad, on, on what I've seen and what I've heard's been going on.
Did I see, Anne, did you have a question? Anne Monet, can you?
Yes, regarding the testing, you said only in Kent right now is where the testing is being handled?
Yes. If the public wants to get a test, you can go to CVS in Kent. I believe that there are other ways to get tests, you know, working with a primary care physician. The hospital performs tests before any surgical procedures, but you can't just go there and ask for a test. Also at Kent State, for Kent State students, the Health Center has some access to testing. But overall, Anne, I would say our access is not where it needs to be or where it should be, which is, I think, you know, Nelson's concern, I think, is a good one. I will say, there is not a county restriction for when free testing pops up or you can go to Akron, for example, or Cleveland or Youngstown, and they have more testing sites. I know Akron, at Chapel Hill Mall, they had pop-up testing over the weekend. And I put that out on my social media, just so people in Portage who may want to participate. And I know the Health Department is also working on getting pop-up testing. And I know the Health Department is also working on getting pop-up testing back. I know initially too, when this first started, we looked at having testing more available. And the hospital and NEOMED were both interested in partnering and making that available to residents, but then we just didn't have the access we needed to the testing materials themselves. So ever since then, we've been in this difficult position where it's it's pretty limited access. And hopefully, just as time goes by, just like we saw with masks, you know, and February and March is pretty hard to find a mask anywhere. Now, we see them everywhere and that's good. And hopefully, the testing situation and then eventually the vaccine situation will become more prevalent and and easy to access. But right now, it's just really, really tough. And of course, there's no vaccine. So, you know, we're all in this together, but hopefully, we can speed it up and and make things as accessible as possible and prioritize that.
Thank you.
Of course.
Okay, looks like Bill Childers alias Julia Kolecki has a question for us.
Yeah, that's a technical thing there, Randy, but yeah, yeah. Hey, Kathleen, thanks for your presentation today. We appreciate the county's efforts, particularly on behalf of the people that, you know, are really struggling, you know, United Ways trying to do all we can. And I, but I did want to just put a plug in. I do work at the poll in person November 3rd, and I've done that for a few years. And I would just would encourage everybody to consider being a worker at the at the poll. They they need a lot of people. And and really, that's my kind of announcement, if you will. So, there you go.
I second that, Bill.
Kathleen?
Okay, Commissioner Clyde, you may be aware, since you've spoken to us before, that we always have a respondent. David, you want to get a quick question in, our last one? David Dix, did you have a question?
That census, if we're undercounted by 20%, that's not, that doesn't sound very good to me. And we only have about two weeks left to go, three weeks left to go. What what's going to happen?
Well, right now, we have census takers going door-to-door. But in the meantime, everything all of us can do to get out the website, which is 2020census.gov. People can go on there, do their census. It takes literally five minutes or less. Or they can call 844-330, easy for us to remember, 2020, and do their census over the phone. So it's very easy. We didn't use to, this is the first census we've had online or phone, so that's a nice option. And anything that any of us can do to put it out to our workers, our staffs, the residents that we serve, we we just need to come together and try to get this done. David, I will say that they use some statistical processes to estimate the uncounted population, but I'd rather leave as little of that to the logarithms that they come up with as possible and and try to get as accurate account as we can. I know Janet Esposito, who I've worked with on this, feels that we got an undercount last time. And I tend to agree with that and and hope, hope we can come together and and get this done.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you all for all your questions. I think we're ready for our response, and today that's going to be Deb Cruz.
Kathleen, thank you so much for joining us today. I do apologize, I don't have video. It was working earlier today on a webinar and now it seems to have gone dark. But we truly appreciate you joining us and it's an honor to have you with us at our meeting today. I can certainly appreciate how the county had to turn over overnight and to continue to offer and provide those essential services that all of our county residents rely upon. Personally, I've been impressed with the response of the Treasurer's Office and the Auditor's Office, and certainly with our bond issue on our delayed primary, how the Board of Elections responded admirably. And of course, the school district has been working with the Health Department in collaboration with the Kent Health Department, and all of those essential services have continued in a fantastic way during the pandemic, and we truly appreciate all of those efforts. I'm glad to hear how the county is leveraging the allocation of its federal coronavirus resources. And I appreciate the county's work to help our county's residents and also the businesses who are struggling through this period. I share your concern about our census response rate and how important it is for everyone to be counted because, of course, it impacts all of us and the services and resources that could come back to Portage County. Thank you so much for so ably representing us, first of all, in the past in Columbus as our state representative, locally now as Chair of the County Commissioners, and of course, most recently on the national stage at the DNC convention. And we want to wish you the best in the county's continued response to the challenging COVID situation. Thank you so much for joining us today.
Debbie, thank you so much and thank you all. I so appreciate it.
Thank you, Debbie, for that response. Before we wrap up, I wanted to note that Stephen Smith is with us today, one of our newest members, and just wanted to welcome him and and hope that he'll continue to visit with us weekly. We have three other members that we're trying to get logged on here as well, but Stephen, welcome. With that, we're going to end the meeting.